This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the Joint Alpena City Council and Alpena Planning Commission CIP meeting of 2/17/2021. Leland is joining us today in Anna's absence, and if you'll call the order of City Council, please.
Councilwoman Hess.
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Mayor Protem Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor Walagora is here.
And go ahead, either Paul or Randy. Okay, if you would call the role for the planning commission, please.
Werda. Werda.
Here.
Costelik.
Here.
Bauer.
Bauer here.
Van Wagner. Hubalts.
Here.
Saber. Gilmore.
Here.
Kerschner.
Here.
Voita. Okay, thank you.
I don't see Voita, but did you get Van Wagner? It looked like he checked in right when you called his name.
Yes, I just got here. I'm sorry. I was having difficulty with the IT thing.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure you were accounted for, Clay.
Thank you.
All right. I apologize. I don't have the agenda in front of me. I don't know if it's customary that we pledge at the beginning of this meeting. Somebody can... Is anyone nodding? No.
The pledge is on the agenda.
Yes. All right, then we'll do that, please. I'm sorry. Stand for the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Thank you. Sorry, that's like, it's gotta be like, one of the most awkward parts about virtual meetings. So with that said, I'll turn it over to, I believe Andrea, is that correct? Rachel, you have... Okay, we'll turn it over to Andrea Kears. And get started.
We do need to approve the minutes from Planning Commission from the last meeting to help with my recreation plan for the DNR. Just middle. We can get a motion and a call for that, Cassie.
We typically don't approve the minutes of the Planning Commission by vote. Normally, the Chair asks if there's any additions or corrections, and if there are, we note them, and then we basically indicate that the minutes stand as printed and/or amended.
Okay, well, if we could do that, that would be wonderful.
If there are any corrections or additions, speak now. If not, the minutes are approved as written.
Okay, to start off with the CIP project, we will go to building maintenance first. And we will start with the City Hall building maintenance, and that will be James Malinsky.
This year in the CIP, we did not add any new projects to the City Hall at this point in time, so there are none to go over unless you guys have questions on the old ones.
I have no questions. Anyone from City Council have questions about the City Hall?
No questions, Mr. Ray.
No questions.
None.
No questions.
Any questions from planning commissioners? I hear none.
Then we will move to maintenance, public safety, and that will be Mike Kavashowski.
Good evening, everybody. So we have a couple of new ones. We are siding exposed masonry walls. We're still having some water intrusion above the apparatus base and such there, and so we're heading ready in construction to take a look at it. And we've got weak masonry joints there, as well as we still are experiencing a flashing issue where the roof meets the parapet walls. So the best solution to that was to look at putting some metal siding on that that would blend with the building. And it would resolve the water intrusion as well as solve our flashing issue that we have going on there. So the flashing issue has been there since the building was initially built, so... And then on our overhead doors, number 14, the doors are original with the building. They were of a special design with the architect, and the panels are no longer available. And so with that, we've had a couple of panels that were damaged, and now we're not matching so well anymore. And so we're looking at wanting to do one side of the building this year, do another side of the building the following year, and put new doors in and save some of the panels that are in decent shape yet, because also in the architectural design of the building, they actually used pieces of the door panels, like on the corners of the building, and some of those are starting to degrade. So we would look at trying to save some of those panels and do a few repairs there on those corners. And that's, you know, in the ambulance, and it carries on. It's the same thing with the fire for the two new items. And then on the police, we have the new controls on the ice melt system. We have heat trace cables throughout our gutter system and our drain systems, roof drain systems that help control the ice. And we've had a lot of issues with that in the past. And with the new controls, it would send an alert out to notify whoever's holding the cell phone or whoever we choose to, either through a text message and/or an email that there's an issue with one of the circuits. And then the other new thing that I've got highlighted on the police is we desperately need to get the parking lot lights upgraded there. We can convert over to LED and save a lot of money there as far as the overall cost. And that's about it for the new projects. A lot of them are repeating from years past. So unless somebody has any questions, that's all I have.
I got a couple of questions for you. The... And I'm sorry, I go... Sorry for this, Steve. I've been doing that like my whole life. But anyhow, so the... You noted that the that the ice melt system was having some issues, and that was... So I thought that was more recent than it was, but that was six years ago that we had that we had a contractor in there to take care of all that, the gutters and... Is so... Is that something that's... That should... That could possibly fall under a warranty with them, whatever that damage is or was?
No, actually, Matt, and with the police, for some reason, you know, in review, I guess I should have caught the fact that that actually has been on there from years previous. So the ice melt system is working fine. The issue we have is, I don't know, we don't know if there's a problem with the ice melt system until I open the electrical panel on the breaker system, and I see that there's a trip to breaker there. The new controls, what they would do is they would be integrated with Control Solutions and would send out a message similar to what our HVAC system does right now. If there's a problem, I will get a low temperature, high temperature, if a boiler goes down, I get a text alert as well as an email alert notifying the oven. The ice melt system, again, is working, but we have no way of knowing if a breaker should trip or if something should fail unless we physically look into the panel to see that that breaker has tripped.
I guess my initial thought was to save a couple of dollars and just have some alert in the building go off, being it's normally 24 hours man, but but is it more efficient for you to get an immediate text rather than someone calling you and saying that a light is flashing or something like that?
Yeah, if we were to do that, Matt, we would have to... So if we just put an alert, we'd have to put it down where there's some common travel. If we put it simply on the outside of that breaker box, that room isn't accessed every day, so it would have to be probably down where either Gretchen and Tracy set off, that would have a red light that would come on, and then somebody would come over. But the other thing that the ice melt or the control system would do is we'd also be able to turn it on and turn it off remotely, because it's pretty easy to leave it on throughout the summer, even though it's got a temperature sensor on it. It only comes on below 30 degrees. There's times where you won't need it to be on. So usually, you know, come April until the 1st of October, I just manually go and and turn the breaker off just to make sure that it's not coming on and using a bunch of electricity that we don't need to use. So the control system would really be beneficial remotely and also to get notified.
Okay, my last question about that building is the exposed masonry walls and siding. Would you expect that this is the last of the leak and design issues of the building? Seems like every two or three years, you're well aware that we're addressing something with that building and its design. Do you feel like this is it?
Yes, I do, Matt. You know, we thought that we had it the last time, so, you know, with finding that one flashing issue, but we discovered is whenever we get an east driving rain and it hits those walls, and it's... The siding, just to be clear, is from the roof line up. They're just very short walls that need to be done. It's not siding the whole exterior of the building. It's just that area above that roof line. And I'm confident that that will resolve, finally resolve our issues. A few years back, when we really tied into it, Meridian Construction really was really successful in solving a lot of the issues where, you know, we had leaks in the building, you know, above the bunk room was really bad and various other areas. So this would, I fully believe, would finally resolve the issues with that roof.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Anybody else on council or planning commission questions for Mike?
I just had one question about the replacement of the overhead doors. Are we going to replace those with something that's more of a stock? So they're not custom? So if we have sections that need to be replaced, we can replace them easily?
Yes, we would go with a stock door, and again, those panels would be readily available and more cost effective. The other thing is, is the newer doors will be... Will have better insulation, better R-value, longer duty cycle on them, heavier rollers. We should get more life out of them. That being said, I was also introduced to... One of the firemen had pointed out actually vertical doors that fold up and had mentioned them to me. So I was gonna take a look at them just out of curiosity, because now you don't have the wear and tear on as far as trying to lift them and such. The only thing I would see is possibly snow issues, but I thought I'd take a peek at them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, looks like you're off the hook on that one. Appreciate it, Mike. Go ahead, Andrea.
Perfect. There are no more questions for Mike. We will move to the capital improvement project portion, and we will start with the downtown DDA fund, and Anne.
Hey, hello, everybody. So there is one typo right off the bat. Our Economic Development Property Acquisition Fund should not be charged to sewer, the sewer fund. That should be for Fund 216 Economic Development. So that's one thing that we noticed that will need to be changed after this meeting, so my apologies for that. As far as other projects, a lot of these are carryovers that you've seen before. However, we did remove both the Royal Knight Business Incubator Project and the State Theater Project. As you probably are aware, both those properties have been purchased by a private entity, so those two are both removed from our DDA projects. And then we did add one new one, which is the Historic Plaque Project. This has been something we've talked about for numerous years that we'd like to get on our schedule to fund. So this would be a collaboration between the DDA and business owners and the public library to have some type of plaques installed on historic buildings throughout our district. You may have seen these in like downtown Katski and other communities. So how that project exactly looks, we're working on, but that is something we added for 2022, 2023, to begin to fund. And then just some of our other projects that will be priorities for next year. So public art and placemaking, we still intend to do our public mural project again this year. Probably not on walls of buildings, but some type of kind of semi-permanent structures that could go in different park areas or areas we'd like to bring more foot traffic to. Bike racks, we are planning on having smaller ones fabricated throughout the downtown to replace the ones we current rent out. And then we also need to update our strategic plan, so that is set up for this fiscal year as well. So we are talking about what exactly we need to do to update some of that, as well as look at our boundaries for our district currently. So it's kind of a high-level overview of some of the changes from last year, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
Hi, Anne. This is Amber.
Yeah.
Yes, I see the downtown alleyway projects or improvements, and I know that's... We've been looking at that for a while. I just wondered if you could just give a brief any movement on that, and if there's any way to be involved with it, I'd be interested. I just want to let you know that.
Yeah, so over the last year, there has been a group of business owners downtown, especially around the center building, that have been interested in kind of taking that up as a project. So the last time they met was, I believe, this fall, right before the holiday season. So we've kind of taken a step back with the planning, but say, you know, we're happy to help and certainly contribute funds, since that is one of our priorities to see. So that's something I can let you know, Amber, when they meet up next, if you're interested in being a part of that, since that is something, you know, we've talked about for numerous years. We'd love to see those alleyways be more pedestrian-friendly, and that's what they're hoping for as well. So I can... I'll keep you in the loop when they meet up next.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would like to be updated, and also, you know, it's been mentioned before in the past, the idea of making some pedestrian-only, and that's something that's obviously come to council, probably wondered where that was at. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
There are no more questions for Anne. We can move to Bill Forbusch to talk about fire and related categories.
Good evening, Council and Planning Commission. Appreciate your time this evening. I'll be addressing both the ambulance and fire sections, and I was really only gonna talk much about the projects that were happening in the next year, although we do have some further out. Last year, we put in a paint job under ambulance for the Echo Unit. The Echo Unit is a non-transporting paramedic unit that serves primarily the west side of the county. We got it federal surplus from through the DNR. It's silver like a sheriff car. We'd like to make it red so that it doesn't look like a sheriff car. But we got a really good deal on it. We were able to get it at no cost whatsoever and upfitted it in-house, so it's been really neat. We'd like to paint that. That's just over the Capitol threshold. Last year, it was actually approved, and then there were budget cuts, and it fell out of the budget, so we're hoping to put that back. Under ambulance, the other two projects are a little bit further out. There's one more lifting and loading system needed for the ambulances. All of our ambulances, except one, are equipped with the hydraulic loading systems. And since we went to those probably five or six years ago now, we have had absolutely zero workman's comp injuries caused by lifting patients into or out of the ambulance. So very excited at the success of that. And then looking further down the road, in several years, we need to look at, starting to look at a new mobile intensive care unit ambulance. Not yet. We have one and a half at this point, an older one and a newer one that are serving very well, but we do want to plan ahead forward for that. Skipping cemetery, running down to the fire section. Fire and ambulance, by the way, are combined in the city budget at this point, but are still separate in the CIP, because we just combined budgets just last year. Our number one priority project is compressed, the breathing air compressor for replacing the air in air packs that firefighters use as their air supply when they go in. Our current compressor is over 30 years old. There are not parts available for it. They're still kind of patch, you know, patching it together with gum and twine and what have you, but it really is in need of replacement. We have written a federal grant for that the last two years running, just submitted one day before yesterday, I believe, and we're hoping to be successful in that, but not sure if that's gonna come through or not. When it finally dies and we can't fix it at all, we'll end up having to take the tanks to some other department, the closest one is CRTC, to have them refilled, and that is a problem, because you need them filled rapidly at the fire scene or shortly thereafter. We have a recurring project for 800 megahertz portable radios. Unfortunately, they're very expensive, no less than $2,000 apiece. We've lost several of them since we won 803. Mobiles have gone past end of life and don't work anymore. And we've got a couple of portables damaged on scenes and not able to be repaired, so we'd like to start a regular process of replacing them as needed. The two interesting projects coming up, the unusual projects are the functional fitness equipment and the shipping containers. Functional fitness equipment is part of an initiative that the guys have started here that is really exciting. What they're doing is they're doing daily workouts on fire-specific skills, fire-ground kinds of activities, so that they're working out to increase muscle mass and to increase muscle memory, but at the same time, those things that they're working out on are not just lifting weights or whatever, but things that are fire-specific. For example, there's a log that they've got out back, a piece of telephone pole that they hit so many times with a sledgehammer, and then they go on to the next station and do the next skill and the next skill, which is obviously like chopping with an axe that you'd use on a fire scene. We've been able to get a couple of grants for functional fitness equipment for... One is a prop, for example, that involves drywall squares that go into a frame overhead, and they're able to actually pull ceiling like you would pull ceiling in a structure fire to get to the fire above it. And that repetitive pulling motion is possible with that prop and other props like it. We're trying to eventually get to the point that those functional fitness workouts can become part of our annual agility testing for basic competency and also new hire agility testing, so that we're sure that folks have the the ability to do the fire-ground skills that are necessary. So what we're looking for is some assistance in purchasing some functional fitness equipment made specifically for that initiative. And then along the same lines, we're looking to fund some shipping containers. These are intermodal steel shipping containers, like you see that they put on ships going across the ocean and on railroad cars, and you could just move them around. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to pick up two or three of those, stack them on top of one another, and build a fire training facility on city property. There are two possibilities where that could be done, and of course, a training building would cost gajillions of dollars. We're just asking for a couple of grand per container to stack up some containers, and we'll cut holes in them for windows and doors and what have you. You could even do live fire training in them. Neat tools. One possibility would be on the Road to Nowhere north of town. It has the advantage of being paved and having a hydrant right there, which is a huge advantage. It has the disadvantage of being visible from the highway. The other possibility would be somewhere in the back 40 at DPW. There may not be a hydrant as convenient, and it would be very muddy, but on the other hand, it wouldn't be in the public view. Either way, it would provide us an opportunity to do hands-on training even more effectively than we're doing now by having the correct facilities to do it with. In the past year, we've logged over 4,500 man-hours of fire training, over 250 last month alone, more training than this department has ever done in its 150-year history. And I give a lot of credit to Rob Edmonds, our Deputy Chief Training Officer. This is the first time we've had a full-time training officer, and he's done a fantastic job, but in order to get to the next step, he needs a few more tools to make that happen. And so that's what we're looking to put together with the shipping containers, is kind of a hands-on area where you could do forcible entry, where you can do some burn training, some ladder training, a number of different things. The site is not as important. It's just getting started with the containers, and we'll fabricate them into something from there. And then the last item is just hose and nozzle replacement. Every year, we test all of the hose, every length of hose. Every year, some of it fails, and we need to replace a little bit to make sure that we have enough to do the job. Any questions I can help anyone with? Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Yeah, thanks, Chief.
Okay, there are no more questions for Bill. We can move on to Joel with police and related categories.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Right off the bat, for our first project, police vehicles replacement, we're gonna be making an amendment. I spoke with Anna last week, and we believe we're in a position still this year to purchase one of our patrol cars that we weren't able initially budgeted for. And so for the year 2021 through 22, I'd like to reduce that amount to $45,000, because we should only have a need to buy one car out of the next budget year. The other thing with that is that in the narrative and in the past practice, we've always gone after the USDA for grant funding for patrol cars. While we've enjoyed a lot of success with that, the biggest drawback is that it is extremely, extremely time-consuming. It is not a fast process whatsoever. On top of that, we've seen a fairly significant delay in the building and delivery of patrol cars. And as you know, they are probably the most important piece of equipment that we have for our department. So if we acquire the first car this year, and still this year, which we're... Keep our fingers crossed. Again, we should be able to reduce down to just the one car next year, not using the USDA. I'll speak about that in a later project that we are gonna be using USDA for, hopefully, for our purchase. So does anybody have any questions about project number one, the vehicles? Okay. Project number two is pretty straightforward. We need to acquire an additional 800 mobile radio for the new patrol car. That'd be for the one in 2021. Moving on to project number three, also very straightforward, and I guess at that point, I'd like to tell you that we didn't put anything in the CIP this year, any fluff. Everything that we really have listed are critical projects, and this is being probably one of the bigger ones. And that's the replacement of body armor. We replace our body armor, our bulletproof vest, every five years. That's what they're warranted for by the manufacturer. We have a cap, I believe, of $16,000 from the federal government for reimbursement. They call it 50% reimbursement, but they do cap us at $16,000 currently. But we're hoping to... And the vests, like everything else, have been going up in cost. They're just under $1,000 a vest right now. I think they're hovering around about $900 per vest, but we are due to replace those this coming July. But we are due to replace those this coming July. Project number four will be, as Chief Porbusch has said, we're also looking to replace our portable or our handheld radios. And as he indicated, they are expensive. We are going to be shopping around for perhaps new vendors or a different model. We have been with Motorola for years, they're, they're a great radio, they've served us well, and we may still purchase Motorola, but we are going to be looking around perhaps Kentwood and a, and a couple other ones to look at some different options. We did get a recent quote, and for the amount of radios that we need, we're looking at about sixty-six thousand dollars for the entire project. In the narrative, I indicated that we will be using, actually I did not put it in the narrative, this is one of the additions, we will be using the USDA grant process for this project. If we do, if we're not awarded the USDA grant, then what we plan to do is spread the, the project over three years, so roughly twenty-two thousand dollars each year if we're not awarded the grant. But again, we've had pretty good luck with that in the past. Next project number five deals with a, a project that we actually started last year that we were pretty optimistic about. It is a grant through AAA and for a radar traffic trailer, solar powered, and I'm sure many of you have seen them along the roadsides. And so what we've done is that we've, back in January, I resubmitted the grant application to AAA. We won't know for a few more months if we, if we got it or not. Again, I'm optimistic, but you never know, you never know with grants. So the total project came to approximately sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. If awarded the project, we would have to buy the trailer upfront, I believe, and so that's why we have it in the, have it budgeted here. We are looking to do a three thousand dollar match for the project, a city contribution, and that would be split between my department and engineering. I talked to Rich, and so if we got the project, we would contribute fifteen hundred dollars towards it, and engineering would, would contribute fifteen hundred dollars towards that, because a trailer has a message board on it, which you can, not only about speed, but you can tell people that there's a road closure ahead or a detour, something like that. So engineering would also get a lot of benefit out of, out of this trailer. Then moving on to number six, similar, we, I had submitted a grant application last year to the community foundation here in Alpena, and we were awarded a thousand dollars towards a project for a solar powered radar speed sign and the required software for that. It's about a forty-five hundred dollar project, again, we got a thousand dollars awarded to us. We have about, I think, six months to use that, I can get an extension. But radar traffic signs, as we know, are, are very useful tools for speeding, for slowing speeders down. And so we're, I'm asking for the thirty-five hundred dollars to complement the thousand dollar grant money we were already awarded. And then lastly, and again, this is kind of like radios in cars, kind of important to have, we're on a scheduled replacement of our, well, they're commonly called tasers, that's actually a, a brand name for this product, but we're going to be replacing our conductive electrical weapons. They, we've had real good luck with them over the years as far as maintenance, they're very durable, they're very tough, but they do get old and then we fall out of also warranty after so much time. So we'd like to continue with our scheduled replacement of our tasers, they're a critical tool for the officer. They, they have ended many, many combative situations and, and kept people, both the officers and the subjects from further harm, which is always important. So that is it, the seven projects from the police department. Does anybody have any questions? Wow, that was easy, thank you.
Thank you chief.
Next, we will move on to Shannon, our harbor master for the Marina Fund.
Good evening, we're going to be doing some different projects this year over at the Marina, we're kind of taking a step back from the ones you've probably seen in the past there, and going to start out this year with a master plan for the Marina. We kind of want to revitalize things down there, so this is a very good first step, it's going to be a priority this year. In addition, another big priority down there is potable water system to the seasonal docks. We've been having issues with it for the last few years, it's required us to actually switch things over and mark the water not drinkable down to the boats. We think we have a solution, we're going to try to do this year, which will fix that issue and get drinking water back to the boats. The rest of the new projects you're looking at there are follow-up to the master plan that we're planning down there, which will be a survey that's needed in order to start some design work, some design services in case we do buildings, and then in the future, any kind of building, buildings that we will do that will have hopefully grants attached to them if we're lucky. Is there any questions?
No. Thanks Shannon.
Thanks. Next we will, next we'll move to Steve with our IT fund.
All right, as you can see, it's, it's a lot of the same, we've kind of got it down to where, you know, we're just doing maintenance or upgrades. We, we just finished our, our last go-around with all the computers, so everybody within the city has a, has a new computer within the last two years, so that's good to have. The, the one project that is on top, the city hall copier, again, that one keeps falling out of the, out of the budget when it comes, when it comes time to, to cut things, that's a, that's a easy one to cut because of the cost, but it's something that we really, really need to consider this year doing. We're, you know, we have a contract, so the copier always gets fixed under that contract, but it, it takes longer and longer because parts are few and far between for it and things like that, so we're, I'm hoping this, this one stays in the budget this year. The rest of everything else is kind of in line with, you know, standard upgrade, standard upgrades throughout the different years and, you know, servers here and there, the police in-car video systems and tablets, those are all in line with how Joel buys his vehicles, because they go per vehicle, so those will get modified as such. If, if Joel's only going to buy one car next year, those will, those will get modified as such at budget time, so, but other than that, it's all, all standard, standard upgrades and, and maintenance items. If anybody has any questions?
I was just going to say, Steve, we will do our best to keep the copier in there so you can keep your sanity.
That would be good, much appreciated.
Thank you Steve, nothing here. Thanks.
Okay, perfect, well, I will talk about planning then. Number one is going to be the economic development marketing program. It's important that some of the vacant properties that the city currently owns are sold, it's also important just to have a program for marketing for the city, you know, with the location that we currently have, and especially with COVID, you know, we can't always afford to wait for opportunities to come to us, so hopefully we can get something going with Target as well as the Chamber. And the only real change for planning this year is the removal of the strategic plan from the CIP, we are actually able to do that this year, and the funds that were allocated for it next year have been moved to our public art, so the artist, oh my gosh, I'm blinking on her name, Kelly Montague, she is the one, I don't know if anyone has seen it, but she does the big wing murals, her art is all over the world, we have actually been in contact with her about doing something in Alpena, so the funds from the strategic plan of five thousand dollars have been moved to public art for the coming year, so that is now ten thousand dollars, but besides that, there are no changes from, are there any questions? Perfect, well, in that case, we will move right along, and we will go to Rich, and he'll be covering everything that's left.
Good evening, and now that all the boring stuff's out of the way, we can really get to the exciting stuff. I'd like to, one thing I'd like to say is, I, I think as you all know, I will be retiring this summer, and with that, we've gone through the transition, been working in a transition mode to, to change, you know, I always did the CIP in the past, and this year I said to my employees, you know, we, we really need to, to work on this together and that, and Shannon grabbed a hold of it, took off running, there's no way I could catch up with her, and she pretty much did all of the, all of the CIP on her own, so I, I, I need to give her kudos for that. She did talk to Steve and I about it, so we did get our input, but. I'm certainly not going to go through every project that we have gone, we have here, just a couple of things I'd like to point out, in, in our vehicles, vehicles are, are very expensive from a DPW standpoint. One of the things we, we have done in the past, we've gone to rebuilding our large plow trucks, having them rebuilt as opposed to buying new, costs about fifty percent of the price of a new one. The other thing we've done past few years is we've leased a tractor from Downsport Tractor to pull our beach cleaner. We are going to, we have other opportunities to, to lease other equipment from them on a year-to-year basis. We're going to look at that and see if it is a cost-effective option for us as opposed to buying. Our equipment fund dwindles every year, and it's, it's difficult for us to be able to buy the equipment that we need, so to fit within that budget, we're looking at all of the, the options we have available. Moving on to the, the cemetery, just a, a few of the new ones, the cemetery garage bathroom renovation, that has not been touched, I think since that garage building was put up there, and it's definitely in need of some improvements. The other one, it's a big ticket item, is the mausoleum repairs, a little bit further down. Shannon was over there with our, with the contractor, we looked at it, and we need some major rehabilitation work on that mausoleum in order to preserve the, the structure of the building. So that is a couple, a couple of years out, but it is something that will give us a chance to, to get a plan together on what we want to do and then begin working with that. You know, I, and I, Anna and Rachel and I, I've been involved a little bit, have talked about our perpetual lock care fund and what we can do with it, but the downside is we can only use the interest that's garnered off from that perpetual lock care fund as far as improvements in the Marina, the principal has to remain untouched, but, and we do transfer that every month, the interest over to the general fund for use in the cemetery, but it is certainly not enough to undertake these types of projects, but we are looking at some options there. I'm, I'm just going to keep rolling, if there's questions that come up from, from either the planning commissioner, city council, please be sure and yell so I can stop, but. Moving on down into our lighting capital plan, one of the big ones, the, the first one's not new, it's one that we've seen, is the lighting of the bike path along Washington Avenue from the cemetery back to Eleventh Avenue. It's been a high priority, we've actually been approached by a contractor about possibly doing the, the labor of installing it, if we'll provide the materials, we are continuing to explore that. Moving on into our parks, the Duck Island Park improvements, number fifty-five, what that is, those are projects out of our rec plan that were identified in there to replace fishing pier, some other, other items in, in the Duck Park area, we will, we would be working with the sanctuary committee on that as that goes forward, and the Bayview tennis court lighting upgrades, we've talked about it before, but it is back into the CIP for this time. Probably one of the big ticket items that will be coming up in the near future is the public restroom improvements slated for, you know, we tore down the old ones there by the Marina, our intention is to put new ones in Bayview Park area. We've got fifty-five thousand dollars established for the design aspects, we've had, we've been in conversation with UP engineers and architects who did the design for Bayview Park, or excuse me, Starlight Beach, and then we also worked with them to do the design for the Woodward Avenue Trailhead. The intention would be to use them, again, to try to maintain that same style as we, as we work along in our parks. We did not get a firm number back from them, but we, we have, we feel fifty-five thousand dollars is more than adequate for their services, if we had to go out for a new contractor to basically recreate the wheel, it would be significantly more than that. And then the, the bathroom improvements, excuse me, are a couple years out from that. What that does is that gives us time to start chasing some grant dollars to, to try to offset some of the cost for that facility. Typically, we're going to need at least a year to a year and a half's lead time on that, on that, those grant dollars. As an example, DNR grants are due at the end of Feb, end of March, I believe, this year, so that we would have a lead time on that. A lot, a lot of the other ones, again, come out of the rec plan, as far as parks improvements, that's why you see a significant amount of yellow, which are new projects in, in the CIP. You know, you, you look down, five hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, we realize that all of these are not going to get funded, but these are still items that are identified in CIP, they're worthwhile projects, we want to get them out there, get them presented, and then obviously during the budget process, we're going to have to make some reductions to that, but we can, we can make those and Moving down to Public Works, the one thing, the new project in there is the public, or public parking lot improvements for Colligan Plaza with renovations to Colligan Plaza that we will be, where intentions are to chase some grant dollars this year to do the improvements at Colligan Plaza, we will, we'll be following that up with improvements to the parking lot. It may be something that does slide forward in future years, we've just got to see where we are with the grant dollars and if we are successful in chasing those grant dollars. Moving down, local streets, no new projects, we've just had to shift those backwards because of funding availability. Major streets, we see a new project for a second avenue bridge abutment, during our last underwater inspection on that bridge, which we have to do on a periodic basis, we identified some repair work that needed to be done at one of the abutments for that, that bridge, so we did get a bridge. So we did get a price and we have, we put it in the CIP to do those works, do that work. And then last year, we did rob the money from the Ford Avenue, the Woodward Avenue Concrete Repairs to do some upgrades on 11th Avenue and advanced Bagley Street Bridge. Those are back into the CIP for this coming year. Moving on, our sewer and water projects, few new ones in there, activities that have been identified through SUEZ. And Shannon has done an outstanding job working with SUEZ to refine our, our project list and our CIP list. So you, you do see a few shifts that have taken place, priorities that have got changed, a few new projects that have come into there based on needs out in the system. Same thing with Water Recycling Plant. She's taken a more active role in, in getting projects from SUEZ as far as at the water plant, water recycling plant. So you'll see some new, new projects in there. The one thing that we do, we do enjoy with SUEZ is that a lot of these projects, instead of having to hire a contractor to do all the work, a lot of it is we're just buying the, the materials. And SUEZ, through their maintenance activities and personnel, will perform the actual change outs. We're changing out chains and flights in some of the basins over there. So we'll just, this year, we're just buying materials. SUEZ will actually be doing the installation. So, you know, that, in that case, we can stretch our dollars a lot further going, going through the utilities. Water distribution, again, we're back to same thing. Shannon's taking a more proactive role in working with them. And I don't want to say beating the information out of them, but certainly she's, she's done a great job refining those projects. And then water production is one of the, is one of the areas where we've always had a lot of projects. It, it works out well in that we can take the winter, when we're not doing inspections, that out in the field, to work on those, those CIP projects for the utilities. And we knock out a lot of those in the, in the late fall, early spring, to be done throughout the year. And again, we, we tried to do that with, we will try to do that with the water recycling plant this next year as well. But, you know, as you can see, there's a significant amount of money that is out there. And we're looking at almost $58 million worth of need. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, that, that's just a wish list. It's certainly not a wish list. If it was a wish list, there'd be a lot of other things on there that we would put in, but this is a needs list. And that's one of the things that we want to handle. We don't put these in here because we're bored and we just want some projects to do. These are things that, that have to be done in order to maintain all of our infrastructure in as good condition as possible. So if there's any questions, more than happy to answer any questions if they have, or may have to, may ask Shannon to answer one of it, something specific that she has more information on.
Hey, Rich, it's Matt. I, I had one question. As a matter of fact, I had several that I sent to Rachel and Cindy because I wasn't sure if I would get through the whole meeting. Because I have to leave, not because I would be tired of you guys. But you, you answered really almost every one of them as if you had my email yourself, which you might have. But the only, the only question that I did have was the, in the year 25, 26, there's a, there's a, a study, a water treatment plant process improvement study. And if that's, my question was, can you answer to why we would do like five years of all of these improvements to the water treatment or water production plant? And then have the study done? Should, is it completely different to what we're working on or?
Basically, that was a, an item that was B, that, that the particular individual who does our sanitary survey, which is a survey of our water plant, water distribution system, he was really pushing for, in discussing it with Mike Lewinsky, we wanted to put it in the CIP, but we don't think it is as critical as this individual thinks. So it is in our capital improvement plan, but it is not a critical element that we need to move forward on the capital improvements.
I appreciate it. And just for the record, for Leland and for Cindy, who is going to continue to facilitate the meeting on behalf of the city, I'm, I do have to leave. I have a, a prior commitment. And, but I certainly thank all of you for, for all the work that you put into this. And see you soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Rich or Shannon, any on the board?
Counselwoman Hess, I have a question, probably for Rich and then also maybe for Gentry as part of it. Speaking of needs, we all need to use the bathroom at times. And I know the, the public restrooms are part of the plan looking ahead and we're requesting grant dollars and looking for funding. But I just, and I know at one point with the business incubator plan downtown, the idea was to maybe have public restrooms there at the Royal Night Theater Facility. And that's not going to happen now. I know the downtown is one area that hasn't had any public restrooms really ever. The harbor's two blocks away, doesn't really meet the needs of downtown shoppers. I know it feels necessarily fair to make the businesses, especially this past year when most restaurants had to be closed, really, to absorb all the bathroom needs for the public. So I guess I just wondered, the downtown bathroom, public bathroom facility could be looked at again since that incubator plan isn't going to be happening. And then also, in the meantime, until we get the restrooms at Bayview, Chiquis, and I guess those are the main ones, we're down the road, we plan to probably build actual facilities and hopefully year-round facilities because a lot of our areas have slutters and other things. So hopefully they're not shut down during the winter and new facilities hopefully could stay open. Do we have adequate budget for putting portable restrooms, all the places they need to be in our community? Because I've heard stories of literally children like, you know, being in public and, and how most adults can hold it, but there's situations where we don't have public facilities for, especially visitors who maybe don't have a home base here. So I just wonder, maybe Rich could answer that or Shannon depending on, and then also maybe Ann about downtown facilities.
Yeah, and as far as the portable toilets, we, we do put out a lot. It's, it's quite honestly, it's amazing what we spend for portable toilets throughout the year. We have anywhere from 17 to 20 of them out in the various parks, several of them in some parks. We have the barrier-free facilities in some parks. So we, we do have those out. We did supplement last year when we had public bathrooms closed down. We did supplement with two additional portable toilets at, at that same site. The, the, and I'll jump in here and Ann can certainly as well. One of the things we did look at, and it's been used in a lot of other communities where, you know, the cost, the cost of building and maintaining a public bathroom is relatively expensive. And one of the options that exists out there is to partner with a local business and basically, for lack of a better term, pay them a stipend to, for, for them to pay for additional cleaning and that, to make their bathrooms a public, open to the public in the downtown. Whether that is an option, I know we were approached by one individual who had an interest in doing that. That was a number of years ago. But it, it is something that, that we could look at in lieu of, or in the, in the near term, for if we were going to build something in the downtown, it's not going to be for, for several years, a few years anyway, it may be something as an interim step. So, and I didn't mean to jump in on the top of you there, but.
Yeah, Rich, yeah, you just said kind of what I was going to add is that, you know, we definitely are aware that this is something that our downtown needs, which was part of the reason we were pursuing an incubator, so we could achieve kind of multiple things at once, both having space for businesses and a kitchen. But with that, kind of falling to the wayside this year, it's definitely something we can revisit, whether something like Rich said, where we could compensate businesses that are already essentially having their restrooms be used as public restrooms. There's a few that certainly are that way. Or, you know, long-term, if we ever had something like a parking garage that was DDA or city initiated, like making sure that's part of a plan like that would be my long-term kind of thoughts about it. But it's definitely something we can revisit because we are aware it's, it's a, it's a burden on our businesses and people need them, so.
Is this something that DDA could broach their businesses with?
Yeah, absolutely. Like kind of what Rich had mentioned with maybe compensating some of them, you know, like I know Mango is the center building or the two that come to mind that get treated as public restroom. So it's definitely something we can bring up again.
From City Council, are there any other questions for any department heads?
No questions here.
I'll say.
Mayor Protem, if I could just add something?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank all of our staff for doing such a wonderful job, as always, in pulling together the CIP and also to Cassie Stone, who is kind of behind the scenes there. I know that she puts together a lot of this, you know, from the department heads. So, and as well as Andrea in keeping us facilitated here. So thank you all.
I echo what Rachel just said. Staff does a wonderful job on the CIP every single year. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so the Planning Commission, do you want to take, to do a motion first? Or do you want the city?
I, I have no preference.
Well, why don't, why don't Planning Commission do it first since this is their document? And then City Council will entertain a motion.
All right, I would ask for a motion to approve the CIP.
Would make a motion to approve the CIP as it is drafted.
Motion by Clay.
And this is Diane.
Second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Take the roll, please.
Van Wagner.
Yes.
Boobalts.
Yes.
Perschner.
Yes.
Gilmar.
Yes.
Estelik.
Yes.
And Wurda.
Yes.
Believe that's it.
All right. Over to you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, Planning Commission has made the motion. It was seconded and it passed. I will entertain a motion from City Council.
Councilman Noah, I move that we approve the CIP as presented.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Mike made the motion, support by Danny. Any discussion? Okay, Anna, well, Anna's not here, Leland's here. Leland, you can take the roll.
Okay. Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah.
Councilman Noah, yes.
And Mayor Walagora is excused.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Leland. If there's no other business, which there isn't, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Noah, I move we adjourn.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Leland, can you take the roll?
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah.
Councilman Noah, yes.
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Goodbye, y'all.
Bye-bye.